I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's, uh, this is a special meeting, actually. Monday, July 10th, about 28:06. Appreciate everybody coming. Just, uh, we have to stick to the agenda based on these special meetings. Everybody knows that. We did a pledge of allegiance. MT, you wanna do that today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ron, we'll leave it some prayer, please.
Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come today and to do the business in Nelson County. We pray that each and everything that we do here and say here would bring you the honor and the glory and that we would conduct ourselves in a manner befitting of the sons of God. We ask these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Achievements and recognition. I was gonna mention a couple things. Joe Pruitt, uh, Michael is taking over Joe Pruitt's position. I think we talked about that maybe by asking me, but I just wanna thank Joe for all the years and years and years. And we'll have some more stuff coming down the pipeline probably, but Mike was kinda, Joey's officially, August 31st, I guess.
Yeah, no, boy.
But Michael is, uh, working with him and, uh, you know, I just wanna make a note of that so everybody would know, wouldn't you get into some more of it later if you want? I think the transition or whatever is going pretty good so far, so we can talk about that a little bit later. Let's do the approval of minutes. Anybody got any questions on the minutes?
Two sets, right?
Two sets of minutes.
I think no any changes. I'm gonna make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Motion, Jeff. Second by MT. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bring another pen. We got public comment. I'll cut this off now. And we got, uh, Joe Larry Manning, he's on here. Uh, Joe Larry, you wanna come up?
Well, I can just stand here. I'm just, well, interested in the video. Go ahead, here's a situation from Nelson County. It's growing from a molehill to a hill and knob, maybe a mountain down the road, uh, because, uh, we're gonna have this landfill forever. But I don't know a lot about how you all doing it, you know? You got other counties just dumping here and all and whether, uh, how much of them responsible for the, uh, the garbage that goes in it and whatever they're dumping in it. But I see on the agenda that you's gonna buy some more land. Is that right?
No.
Lease some more land or whatever.
No.
Already owned.
Already owned. Okay. Well, uh...
We've got enough land.
I guess the point I'm trying to get at is how much responsible is other counties toward us? Should they be owned as much at the dump as we do? Then they would be totally responsible, just like we are. As our county grows, the more garbage we're gonna have, the bigger this system has to be. And, uh, paying the dues, I don't know if Washington County is saving money or the other counties that have landfills are saving money. But my feeling that sooner or later it has to be a joint ownership of this or it's gonna end up costing our county a whole lot more down the road, like 30 years down the road. What's gonna take place? What's the government gonna do about us dumping out there? And how gigantic is our system gonna grow with leaks and whatever other rules and regulations that come forth?
Okay. I appreciate your comments. When we get in, when we get to the landfill and the phase here, I'll let, uh, Don, we'll discuss that.
All right. That's what I wanted to say.
Mike explains to us further detail when we get to that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Fields and transfers that go to Rhonda. Uh, if there's any questions on all that. There was a lot of year-end stuff, so she was finishing up and, uh...
Were there any surprises there, something that we didn't expect or anything?
On the year-end transfers, no. It's just, it's always, there's always something at the end of the year to balance out. But we, we were able to do that without even touching the reserve account. So, um, to me, that was a, that was a positive sign inside the budget. But, um, I know it's a, it's a big report, but it's just something required by the state to balance each line item in the budget. So, um, it just requires approval from you for me to be able to do that.
You know, did that happen July the 1st?
That was effective, actually, as of June 30.
June 30?
That closed out the fiscal year.
Okay.
So, it's gonna, um, I'm still closing out the fiscal year. I don't have the report, um, yet as of June 30. I hope to have that within the next week. Um, but everything looked good and, um, I think a little bit better than what we had budgeted for carryover and stuff. But I'll have those numbers filed in the next week or so.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Adam, second by Keith. Any more discussion?
Fields and transfers, correct.
Fields and transfers?
Yes.
Any more questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ted Shields is there. He's the chief of the Northeast Nelson Fire Department. Is that the proper words, Mr. Shields?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge. As y'all may or might be aware, in SDG, we are the water, in our budget, to fiscal board. It has been approved on second reading. You don't need to take action on it, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those. Everyone should have received that in your email. If you didn't, I do have paper copy. Anybody? Is presented?
We got, we got paper copy we passed out, too.
Okay.
This is passed through, but, uh, what I can see, I'm doing some good job over there. Since I've been in, I was talking to you quite a bit. Everything running pretty good otherwise?
Yes, sir. Our, uh, our Station 3 was commissioned back in December, so it's been up and running now for seven months.
Well, yeah.
Everything's going pretty well.
We need a motion to accept this. We'll do that here fast.
Yeah.
Second, we do.
Yeah. I'll make the motion that we accept the budget as presented.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Ron, you gave me, I guess, some treasures report.
I don't have anything today.
Anybody got any questions for Rhonda? Let's go to Brad Metcalf and the grants and any updates. First thing we will talk about is redistricting the magistrate or districts. I think he spoke to everybody and we've had meetings and, uh, we've got the committee here, so, uh, Mr. Robinson with Lincoln Trail. Uh, they spent, I don't know how many meetings I've had, but I think it was a pretty clean, so who wants to take the lead on that? Brad?
Just to catch back up with you guys, uh, last week I sent you the final map. The committee got together, uh, a couple different times. They met, made just a few small adjustments to the maps that you've already seen, but you saw that last week. We weren't required to actually have a public meeting by statute, but in the, in the view of transparency, we wanted to go ahead and do that so that if anybody had any comment or questions, they could do that. So, we had a public meeting, uh, that was held. There was no one that attended, but we wanted to make that available if any one in the public wanted to come view the map as it was being presented. The members of the committee are here. I'd like to personally thank them for their service. It's, it's kind of a, um, when you get down into the weeds of moving these lines around it, it can, you know, get very hairy. You know, there's a lot of, um, you have to move a lot of these lines with the census blocks, uh, that are given to us every 10 years. Uh, in addition to that, we worked with County Clerk's Office to try to clean up a lot of the precinct lines, a lot of the small mini precincts that were created after the congressional maps were adopted. So, we corrected all that. Uh, and also, we'd like to thank, uh, the clerk, the staff, and Mike Robinson with Lincoln Trail who aided us with their computer programs in getting the maps that you have before you. There's a copy that's, uh, on the desk that's the same as the ones that you received in your email. Mike, uh, if you have anything more, go ahead.
I just, I just wanna again thank you all for working with me. If they can work and tolerate me, they were doing pretty good, so I appreciate that. I do have hard copies of all the, all the descriptions and the maps as they stand now and also a large copy that I'll leave here, uh, with Brad, so if anybody needs, um, paper copies of that stuff, it has available. If anybody has any questions about how the process worked or where we're at, I'd be happy to answer anything I can as to technical advisory.
Can each of the managers get a large copy of our district that we started with?
Yes, I can. I can make that.
I would like to have one. I seen everybody else with...
So, the, uh, after the map is, after you, if you adopt this map as presented, um, we will make it available on our website. Uh, I'll make sure that members of the press also get copies.
Do you don't think they can understand all this?
Well, what you have before you there is not only just a map, but the actual verbal text description of your maps. That is the legal document that we need to adopt.
I think, I've got copies here, sir, but I think Brad printed those copies yesterday.
I'll leave it here when I want to read.
Um, so if we could, if everyone's in agreement, uh, we would need a motion to adopt the map.
I'm gonna say, ask if Jake and Deb, Jake Dillon, Debbie Snead, both are here. I think they'll recognize, uh...
And Mike, Mike's there.
Michael Ma, never can get your name, Mike. Ma. But these are the three.
Ma, Ma, Malhan. Yep. He'd be called every day and said what they did.
So, I'll recognize these three from the committee. You have anything I wanna discuss or talk about?
Been our pleasure.
Brad came up to my house and I had, I got a pretty big, big, big table. I had to wipe everything off of it and he put all these maps. I said, "Hold on, hold on. You got me lost. Where's Barstow? Where's, where's New Haven?" And I said, "I'm trying to figure out where I'm at." And then he said, "This is that." And I said, "No, you need to turn that one around." And we did all, but we finally come to some kind of agreement, so...
Yep. Good job.
I wanna appreciate you all getting all our relatives out of my district. I've already got laminated cards with MT's number on it.
We got one, we got one more person in there that we didn't get out, but we'll work on that 10 years down the road.
Big selection, huh? Oh, we'll have a team on.
Yeah. All right. I'll take, I'll accept the motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Adam.
Second.
Second by John. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. Thank y'all for that.
Thank you all. Everybody was involved. Thank you.
Here's a rough copy. Man wants to read it and we'll get some maps and all that coming up, so... I've got some appointments that I need to put in today and, uh...
Judge, you want me to go over just our grants before you move on?
Yes, I'll check that.
Judge, a couple grants. We're finishing up on the last grant for the Sheriff's Department for their service pistols. Uh, we finally got all of our statements and quotes and everything in, so we're gonna be turning that in, uh, probably here this week. Also, this week will be...
Get back a little detail on that, what it is?
That's their, uh, every several years, the Sheriff's Department, after they, because they have to do so much training, there's only so many rounds that you're supposed to put through a service weapon. So, after they reach that limit, then we apply for grants to replace those service weapons. So, this will replace all of their pistols, their clips, and I think that it's a box or two of ammunition that comes along.
So, what happens to those weapons after their service life ends?
They're sold. We turn those back.
Uh, do we turn them back in to KSPR?
The last time that we did the grant, uh, they were sold out to Gunco. They sold them.
How do you keep up with how many rounds you shot there?
They do that through training. We, we have a log, a training log of what we do, what we shoot.
So, if you go somewhere and you shoot 100 times, you write down like a DOT thing?
Yeah, we, we know what, what course of fire needs, you know, 10 rounds, 15 rounds, we know.
That doesn't count for deputies that practice on their own, but it does account for anything they officially shot.
So, this helps to defray that cost, 'cause that's where others...
Much of this grant, so 70,000, somewhere in the...
Close range of 70,000. The next one is the, uh, the Kentucky Department of Education, Spay and Neuter Grant that we apply for every year. Uh, we were waiting on a, uh, a quote from the Humane Society. I should have that this week, and once we get that submitted, then we'll turn that in. Uh, that helps to, uh, we use that a lot of times to help to defray the cost of our vaccines and, uh, vet costs of animal control. And then the last one is the big one that we've been working on all year, which is the Homeland Security, Cyber Security Grant. We're still putting together that package. It's not due until the end of the year. We're gonna try and get it in in late fall just to get an early start, but we wanna make sure that we put together everything in that package, 'cause it's a very large grant and a very large package, so...
What's the amount?
And right now, that's what we have in the grant department, so...
You know what you got on grants?
Yes, sir, right now.
All right. Let's go to the appointments at the airport. I apologize for his name. We have an airport board member passed away, uh, two weeks ago, two weeks ago. And, uh, to replace that. So, I'm recommending Angie Stone, needs a pilot for, I think, American Airlines.
UPS?
Uh, he doesn't UPS.
Right now, I'm doing it.
He's, uh, he's been, uh, while his life, and I asked him to sit on the board, so he's got a lot of knowledge and things, so he's accepted that. I need a motion to accept him, Angie Stone.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by MT. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's for you, sir. I'm sorry. And then the next one, we've got North Nelson Water District, and I'm gonna thank Don Love for serving, uh, for many years, you know, the board in North, the Northeast Nelson. I don't think Northeast is correct. I think it's North, yes, North Nelson. Uh, but, uh, that district's done amazing job over the years, to be quite honest. Somebody's kept up, how they've helped the county in the water and, uh, and we got tapped into the local water, then we re-tapped into the local water, and so it's been, it's been a, they're just a really good, aggressive district that's helped the total county with some of the resources and things. So, I wanna recommend to appoint, uh, O.J. Stein. Uh, he's in the, lives out there on Little Road to, uh, for that position.
Dr. Stein's a Navy veteran, so he knows a little bit about water. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Jeff. Second by Adam. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. He knows a little bit about water.
I liked it myself.
Never looked at that before.
The Navy kicked in, uh...
On the outside.
Code enforcement update, uh, just to let everybody know, 'cause I just had a letter come out, I think, and if you're reading, and I've said this publicly many times, just about every department that we've got, our fee schedules need to be adjusted instead of tax dollars, uh, supporting all of these departments. I actually campaigned on that, discussed that, and said it for many years, and I'm trying to believe that. I just, I just don't like to be subsidizing departments with general tax dollars and it's, uh, people that's using that business, Gilding Houses, me, whoever. I've built a lot of houses. I just think we need to pay our way instead of people subsidizing. Uh, so going back to that, Mr. Spaulding is here and he can address that. There has not have been a fee increase in over 15 years in that department. Uh, I've been trying to make some adjustments there already and, uh, so I've got that proposal here. And Logan, I'm gonna let you, uh, discuss this a little bit and take some questions, please, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I get to court very often, and when I do, I just come off the needle today. We haven't actively done any fee raising since probably around 2008. The department's about 20 years old now. And of course, you all know, if you've read the ordinance, there's a section there that says we can raise it yearly per the cost of living increase. We've never done that. We've always been fortunate enough to where we can, we can live off what we generate. But we're getting to the point where I've gotta find a replacement. I'm getting a little up in years here, and we're gonna start actively finding a guy to replace me, or young lady, whoever. And to make that happen, we've got to increase fees a little bit. If we had backed up to 2008 and increased it to average 3%, is what it averages out between then and the last couple of years, we'd be around 30%. That's, that's not realistic to increase a thing that much. So, we kinda split it. We say we can go 10 to 13%, and that should be, be okay with everybody. So, that's kinda where we are. Uh, on average, we're going about 13% to make up for all those years we didn't do the CPI increase. So, another reason, uh, we are self-funded, always have been. When we started the program, we tried to, to live off what we generate fee-wise. And it's just getting harder and harder. So, we're to a point where we've got to raise the fees a little bit, so...
So, right now, uh, let's just say last year, did you break even? Get into your pocket?
We always try to have a little bit ahead for electronic upgrades, vehicle repairs and stuff like that, because that all comes out of our budget directly. That's not a kind of general fund thing sometimes. So, the bigger items, yes, we, we dip in the general fund occasionally, but so far, we've been lucky and haven't had to. But with the inflation rate that's picked up and all this, things have gotten more expensive, and it's just getting to where we're having trouble.
So, where'd you, how'd you come up with the 13%? You did the...
We went back.
Divide it by the 33?
Yes.
And you just said, "I'll do a third of it"?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
We sat down and just once, and I was trying to be fair, and we just, and we thought, line item, the line item basically, and, uh, I know we come up with 13% probably at best, 400, 500, I labor. Anyway, it's, uh, I think it's a pretty fair compromise, but...
I think it'd be a good idea, and from here going forward, every two or three years, look at that and adjust as needed instead of...
I agree. Do we have to do, do we see their budgets and stuff, too? Or is that something that's not...
It's just passed through?
No, it's, no, this is directly under us. It's all in your...
It's in the general fund budget.
Yeah. But he's talking about how they...
The fee structure.
Their fee structure should take care of their own expenses.
And it generally has to the most important part, but if you, if you look at, I guess, Rhonda, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm gonna be transparent, but if you add the administration, whether Rhonda's part of it, and then you got, you know, Carol does so much stuff, the payroll, and, uh, if you add all that in and, uh, 'cause the equipment upgrades, I'm sure the computers and everything, like every other department, they all need to be upgraded, so it's just catching the point. If we don't do something, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna be too late. And overall, it's been fairly good, but if you add everything into it, uh, the bottom line gets pretty tight, you know what I'm saying? And the housing has slowed down. We know that, so we gotta be careful what we're doing on that. And, uh, you know, we've got some warehouses and, uh, getting into all that too much for us, getting in the weeds, but, uh, how long are they gonna continue to go? Without these warehouses and things, they'd sell their budget quite a bit. But when that slows down, it's just not gonna, you know? You just gotta think about the future. Prepare. Go ahead, Brad, you got a question?
Well, one of the things I was gonna say is, we're lucky with Logan, that we can do this expanded jurisdiction. Correct, Logan, correct? If I'm wrong, it's a...
Yes, that's a good thing.
The replacement for Logan at whatever time that occurs, we're gonna need to find somebody that can carry that on. That, that, that's a lot of that budget revenue. So, saying that, you're gonna, the reality is, you're gonna pay probably pretty good to get a person that can do the expanded jurisdiction.
Level three, right?
Yes.
Level three inspectors, see? And you get in all of it, but, uh, you can do industrial, commercial, and, uh, instead of the state coming in, do it, and the state is the figure right now, we're keeping it in-house.
Well, it's not only a money issue for us, it's, it's timing for industrial people and commercial, you know? And when you keep it local, you can get it done, get it out the door quick. You send it to Frankfurt, good luck when you're gonna get it back. So, it's always been a big selling point for us to have him on board, and the next person's gonna need to be able to do the same thing, in my opinion.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I think so, too, so...
Do you have, uh, go ahead, Brad, I'm sorry.
No.
Do you have any idea what the 13% is gonna be?
It averages out on the, on the non-commercial side about $4 to $6 a permit.
Okay. And yours, time out, the permits, just a guess.
Uh, we did over 1,300 electrical last year.
1,300, you're gonna go up to $4 to $6? You time 1,300 on the commercial, on the residential type?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just electrical. That's what, that's what 13 works out, too, about $4 to $6 in most cases.
Commercial, what's it going to?
Commercials, uh, currently, we're at 1% on electrical. That's gonna go to 2%.
2% bid?
Yes, bid price, yes. And then the, the, uh...
That's pretty good.
The actual building permit. It'll, 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 it'll make a difference, yes. Uh, but that's how we've always tried to weight it. We've always tried to weight it more on a commercial aspect than on the, on the consumer aspect.
I'm looking at the housing, you know, cause interest, that's what slowed the housing down. And then now, we raised the permits, I'll tell you, that's gonna help slow down more, I think, you know? Like Timmy said, he built out of the Ford, I have too, and pretty much at a standstill right now.
Yeah, but you said it'll be $6 on the house. I don't think $6 is gonna slow the house down.
It averages out about, about $5 to $6, yeah.
What's your, what's your bottom line as far as the increase with 13% for your department? And it's about $100.
Rhonda, you're better at that than I am.
I'm outside. No. Boy... I mean, we gotta have that number. If you come up with 13%...
Total, the total number, based on the last few years, this company here, it'll be around $200,000. Brad, you, then Brad went through this, and then you go back to the 15 years, you know, that $200,000,000 has, uh, been gone pretty quick, so, uh, where the inflation is. And we found another level three. Logan, how old are you, Logan? About 60?
66 and a half.
66 and a half?
That tells you something right there. Down to 67.
Uh, we made some adjustments back in the department already, so the, uh, at level three, if you really get into it, and he can explain that a lot deeper than I can, uh, first of all, there's hardly not any out there. And trying to recruit and find one is gonna be very difficult, and then the competitive side of that is gonna be, uh, it's gonna cost us some money, so I'm just thinking about the next, you know, several years here, so I think it's fair with everybody and, uh...
I don't think it's burdensome. Just a quick question, and he puts you on the spot here. This is a modification of an ordinance, is correct, that we need two readings on that, Kelly, do you?
I think it's gonna amend an ordinance, yes. I don't think very much difference from a modification, and, you know, like we've done changing amendments on the zoning ordinance for Brad.
That was our plan.
Okay. Two readings?
Yes.
All right. Just the next version, we give the next one. I'd say we have a markup of, you know, a change, so we can verify.
Can you also put on that, too, the increase where we can kinda do a comparison? That's what it's talking, okay.
I'll get you the, and we can get that between now and the second reading, if you want. And we can adjust it between now and...
Just to educate ourselves.
We can add... After the first reading, Keith, we can, we can, we can make some changes between your first and second reading. If y'all see something, you wanna clarify, too.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the adjusted face schedule for...
I'll second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Adam. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just say one quick thing. I do appreciate, I hope come before you very often, I was for a hold on. So, to be honest, I wouldn't be here today to just like we need it for now in the future. Hopefully, we'll never have to do this again in 15 more years, so...
Maybe we'll roll. If in place you get some check, we might come back and drop them a little bit.
Interest rate, drop.
I'll be gone for any delay. Thank you. Seriously, thank you.
That's 66 and a half.
I appreciate your work.
He's close to your age, Keith.
Yeah, I've got a half on him. Yeah, I've got a half on him.
Let me see here.
I'll see you out here.
Now, Justin had some, uh, he didn't sing me a heartbeat either.
Saved us 30 minutes.
He had some, uh, I talked to him several times over the weekend, and he's had some issues at the jail, and, uh, he had a pretty big one this weekend.
He had an issue with the air conditioner?
Well, this is an inmate, and actually inmates in the Root County, and he's trying to get it dissolved, and some medicals and all that, so he said he probably wouldn't come, he didn't, I thought he'd send me a heartbeat. That's fine, I think everybody's good, uh, on his report, he can get into that next meeting.
Body scanner's in, and then you?
Body scanner's in, and, uh-
There's your, there's your demo.
There's a few tweaks, he had a, one shift that hadn't had a training, somebody did get some stuff in, but that second shift or whatever, hadn't had training, so somebody got some stuff in, and they had some issues there too. But I think as of today, he can clarify, but I think, I think everybody down there's been trained, or they can use it. You gotta be certain, you know, not certified, but go through training and all this stuff, so. But he's done a great job down there, and, uh, him and I met Friday on some other things, and, uh, so we'll be bringing you some more information eventually. Yes, sir?
I'm gonna go ahead and get the court a update on the air conditioner, just so you can know.
Yeah.
As previously, we had declared an emergency when they lost their air conditioning, I guess two weeks ago, uh, to try to get a, to purchase a new one. We thought that, at that time, the contractor had told us that the old one wasn't gonna hold, and we were gonna have to buy a new one. They'd patched it together. Justin started to have second thoughts about that, of thinking maybe that, you know, that we didn't need to get one, our old one was okay, so he had a second opinion done by another contractor who said that they think that it's perfectly fine, uh, that we don't need to buy a brand new one. Uh, they went through and checked everything as best they could, all the seals, the freon seems to be holding. So right now, he seems pretty comfortable, and so does the other contractor, that we won't have to spend all that money to buy a new air conditioning unit.
We had a view of a re, the, uh, same company that built those, the Justice Center, they came back out and evaluated it, and the one prior to that, I'm not gonna get into the accusations, but, uh, saved several thousand dollars, but not in acting, but we're going to, by getting another opinion, so we'll decide.
Oh, you get to?
Yeah, I've had that, in my personal experience, had that before too. Oh, I think I could patch it and put it together, and then two weeks later.
But it never hurt to get a second opinion on a major-
It's getting ready to get, getting it to work out, the rest of July and August.
It don't hurt to get a little bit, uh-
No, no.
Get a little heat in there, make them think a little bit about what come back.
That's right.
The, uh-
Onto the EMS report.
Michael, you wanna talk about the EMS?
We didn't get all the reports, uh, two years to eight monthly report, so we'll give you both June and July, next meeting, and, uh-
That's a good idea, I'll send you first.
He's the one told me to say.
Yeah, you did. You can do that word for about a year.
And he keeps, you know, pawning people off on me and stuff too. Um, but the transition's going well, um, and everything, um, talked to the judge and Joe very frequently, so, um, nothing to report unless he, he wants to say anything in his report here in a minute, but, um, I think everything's going smooth, transition, no issues with employees or anything, yet, but, uh-
I think we had a discussion, they keep us invited on anything, and, and what we need to do on the court side, I guess the magistrate, I've got Michael's number, if I don't get it, make sure everybody-
I have a question. Did you get switched over to the equipment company? Is that, did you all get that switched made?
That was made first, yes. Billy Coby, it's Billy Coby you're referring to?
No, no, the, you were-
Oh. The contract has been signed, the equipment's ordered, we're looking at latter part, July power, um, always September.
Oh, before you can get-
Yeah. We have to make a couple of modifications to, to the truck, but once that's done, then the-
Except for the new, uh-
The power load.
Okay.
Andy Stone, Andy, you wanna stand up? He just walked in, he's late, that's always, but, uh, he's, that's the one that we appointed from the airport, anyway, we did this earlier, so.
Oh, I'll put it at the bottom, it was at the end of your agenda, so that's why.
Well, I just messed up, I just wanted to do-
Oh, sorry, it's your fault.
Anyway, who do you fly for, American?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I wanna make sure it's clear on that.
Then we noticed you weren't here, so we went ahead and brought you to the second side.
Yeah. I've got almost 40 years of aviation experience, I was eight years in the Air Force, I was a safety officer in the Air Force, so, glad to be asked, glad to serve.
I've sent him here for my, has he contacted you yet?
Yes, sir.
You know, let back your information, so I don't, I don't lack him in the meeting, but he'll stay in too. But you've been out there quite a bit, I know, through the school and all that, he's on the, uh, Bardstown School too. They've got that, you know, the training or the school out there as far as airplanes and all that.
Was you out there Saturday morning when they had the breakfast thing?
No, I was not.
I was asked to go, but I forgot about it.
I've been before, I didn't go this one, but they, they get a lot of activities, pretty, pretty neat.
That's what they got, is it?
They've been locked, uh, they've been a lot going on. If I was to tell you real quick, since we're on that subject, they've got, I think it was an eight million dollar grant to, you know, the FAA, what is it, FAA, is what they call it, FHA?
FAA, federal aviation.
But, uh, they're gonna upgrade that, uh, the runways, the big deals is the thickness, and, uh, there's been a lot of talk about extending runways and all that, but according to all the data I've got, discussions with them, they don't need to be extended, especially with the newer airplanes and jets and all that. It's all about the thickness and the weight and the hits and all that, so they're planning on doing that pretty soon, and, uh, you know, the, the general public, I guess, a lot of them out there, I hear from time to time, is that don't realize how important, how active this airport is, and as far as industry and bringing people in, it's, uh, it's a lot of activity, and they've done a great job.
My add was-
Go ahead.
I kinda feel full circle here, my first flight ever I took was out there with my dad, who's a stone, 1969 assessment, 50 foot, so I feel a little bit of a full circle moment here, kind of, but one of the things you're speaking of, uh, with bringing the commercial aircraft in there, they have to have stopways and clearways, and there's just a lot of lighting, it has to have specific types of lighting, or, you know, instrument approach and things like that, so those are significant investments, but it would be something that would be definitely important.
Aren't you gonna have to tear it runway out to thicken it, or can you thicken it from what's there?
I didn't interrupt, but, uh, this is a special meeting, we kinda need to stick to the agenda. Sorry to be the lawyer.
He's the lawyer, Kelly, that's all right. Appreciate you.
You know why you did, you know why I did that? Cause Chip told me to do it and test you.
I'm on track.
The airport board is on it.
Yeah.
It is on it, too.
But he passed the test, Chip told me to test him. Mr. Pruitt, wanna talk about the, your agenda here?
Yeah, uh, talking about a little bit of EMS, Michael's coming on pretty good. Uh, took me about six days and 14 totes to get everything out of my office and piled up my garage, I'll go through it on my free time. Uh, my desk has gone from a nice big desk, if you've been in my office, to little tables followed in the yard. So I'll be there in and out over the next couple of months or so. Uh, today, I report that, uh, we were granted a, a special project grant from KYM to replace a siren. This siren will be replaced at the Bardstown City Barn, so we'll order that here, get, get Judge P.O. and order it next week or so. Uh, that's a 50-50 grant, it's a $22,000 project to replace that siren. Uh, we'll be working on sirens for the public this week, and next week, and the week after, and maybe longer than that, but we'll start probably this afternoon with the new siren in Bloom, in Fairfield and New Haven. Uh, we've got a lift, thanks to Brad and Keith, that we can pull behind the truck and get over there and get it high enough to do the work that we need to do, so we'll be spending that time doing that. Um, and as far as that goes, that'll be my EMA report, I think Shannon has some things she wants to talk about from dispatch.
Can I ask a question on the EMA report real fast? I know, um, given your pending status is soon to be retired, are we advertising for the EMA director, or have you, have you-
Not, not right now, I think, uh, we, Brad and I have talked about it, uh, I believe he's gonna step up to the interim director and give some time for my replacement after that.
So Dispatch currently has 12 full-time staff with 11 working, and also have four fully trained part-time staff, but one part-time in staff and training. Uh, we are currently wait, waiting on a resolution for DOCJT concerning House Bill 373. This requires all part-time dispatchers to complete Phase 1 and Phase 2 before-
You explain what that, whatever word you just called that?
The Phase, oh, Department of Criminal Justice Training.
Well, that helps us a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
You'll pay a lot.
It's where law enforcement and dispatchers have to go to the academy, and we have all our in-service training. Um, the Phase 1 and Phase 2 is where dispatchers and law enforcement do their psych eval. Phase 2 is where we do drug testing and the, um, law, the lie detector. Um, we are now required to, uh, complete Phase 1 and Phase 2 before we can even start training, um, before they can even come in and start their in-house training, which I believe the law enforcement had to do that as part of their POPS testing, uh, but now they, because of House Bill 373, we have to do that as well. And all part-time staff will be required to attend four weeks at DOCJT because of House Bill 373, just as a full-time staff is required to. Um, this is gonna be difficult for part-timers who had the full-time jobs elsewhere in the future. Uh, DOCJT has not put out their plan of how they will train the part-time staff, so we're on hold while they come up with their plan. Until this plan is in place, we will continue to work part-time as directed. And we have started the process for two dispatchers, this affects, all new hires are on hold until the future, or until the issue is resolved. And Nelson County Dispatch applied for two grants this cycle, and we're awarded one grant for a master clock or a net clock. This clock is a satellite base that will sync all clocks to the same time, and that includes our radio, our CAD, et cetera. The grant is fully reimbursable and require an upfront cost of $17,550 for purchase and installation. Our total cost for the equipment will be roughly 10% or $1,755, with $15,795 being reimbursed once the project is completed. The master clock will have to be ordered by August 15th. Uh, Director Gaither is working on writing new policies to fit with dispatch going under county government. And that's all he wrote for me.
He's, um, so, so he's, uh, that's why he's been here today, he'll be out a few days, so, I haven't officially, well, I'll talk to anybody yet, but, yeah, get arms around everything, but I, we wanna move forward with the dispatch and try to help them and support you, and then, like I said, we wanna do whatever we can do to, uh, be one of the best in the state, and, uh, so how's your employees, based on everything you said, in a nutshell?
Yeah.
Your employees are, you're in better shape right now with employees than you were?
Um, it is-
You still lacking?
With the House Bill or with coming under county?
Well, this, this is your total dispatch, uh, employees out there, cause you was, at one time, you was four short.
Right, um, we are the same as we were before coming under county or before House Bill 373, um, except for we have had to let one go who worked with, who were full-time in us, cause it couldn't work for us in EMS, cause for every hour they worked for us, it would be, um, working at time and half. So other than that, we are exactly the same. We had one who was in start with us July 1st, but with House Bill 373, they have to do the Phase 1 and Phase 2. He is scheduled for July 17th to do Phase 1. And unfortunately, we can't schedule him for Phase 2 until we get the results back, and that usually takes one to two weeks.
Yeah.
So, um-
But are they happy with their, uh, everybody happy with their insurance and pay raises and everything so far?
And they are happy with their, um, pay raises, their insurance, it's a little bit more expensive for us. Um, they're not happy, and to be honest, they're not happy with the way that the holiday pay is, because it's definitely a lot less than what we were used to, but, you know, they're gonna get used to it, just like they're gonna get used to everything else, so.
I've got a question.
Uh-huh.
If y'all hadn't came under the county, would this House Bill 373 affected you the other way?
Yes, it affects everything's happening in the state.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
One thing we're gonna do is, we're gonna reach out to our legislators, uh, there's, there's been some unintended consequences of 373. Uh, they're trying to come to a more uniform model around the state, so all PSEPs are done the same way.
It's gonna hurt your crap out of you.
It is, it is, and that's, we're gonna try to get them to go maybe back up a half a step. They wanna try to get these new dispatchers up and, and certified, I guess, as quickly as possible. But the problem is, is twofold. One, DOCJT hasn't set out the, the way that they wanna do everything, so it's put everybody on hold. The second is, is that you can't bring anybody on board and, and let them start training until they have both their Phase 1 and 2, which takes a bit of time. So we wanna try to see if maybe they'll, uh, we don't know if that's what they intended to do. Sometimes they have, you know-
Right, sometimes they pass a bill then-
Figure out what it did afterwards, right. So we're gonna try and see if maybe next year they can back that down and, and let us bring them on pending Phase 1 and 2, and then if you don't pass Phase 1 and Phase 2, then you, we'll have to let them go.
You gotta test the job, test to be sure.
Right.
Maybe I wanna do this, maybe I don't.
Right. So we're trying to find some interim way that, that, but right now, we've kinda, you know, our hands are kinda bound. Uh, it wouldn't have made any difference, you know, whether they came under the county or not, but-
Well, who, who dreamed this House Bill 373? Through you.
Your, your elected officials. They're from the government, they're here to help.
Boy, this judge.
Yeah, work on that, that needs some, that needs some work, too.
Come up some stuff, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
The, uh, I'm gonna move at, I'm gonna hold number 14 till I get down to my report. John, Greimel.
Okay, a little quick summary, um, in response to the question, I guess, about other counties coming in. Um, back in the nineties, they changed the rules and regulations of that the landfills have to be fully contained, so it's gonna be a lot bigger expense-
Ray W., will you hear this?
For the, for the counties to, basically build a landfill. So what they did, and Brad corrected, Tom, we're all, he was here before me, but basically teamed up with Marion County and Washington County, because it's a big expense to build that landfill, so it's more of a teamwork effort than just breaking another county's garbage. We can, um, we are permitted to take a lot more garbage, like, basically, every county are permitted to take a lot more garbage. Like, basically, every county that touches, we can take Spencer County, Bullet County, Hardin County, LaRoe County. But what we do while we team up with just Washington, and we're talking about Washington and Marion, is to help operate a landfill. Like, when our compactor went out, we spent $700,000. It takes a lot of money to put that garbage in the ground, so those two counties helps us out for the day-to-day expenses. But if you take every other county around us, we'd fill up a lot faster, and we'd have to go up a lot more, because we'd have to take our garbage to Louisville or Hardin County or somewhere else.
And in that timeframe, when we originally went from the, what we call the old landfill to the new one, you know, the one that's fully contained, we went into an interlocal agreement with Marion and Washington, had contracts with those counties. Uh, probably 10, 12 years ago, Washington County decided they wanted to go to Hardin County for several reasons, won't get into all that. But now they're requesting to come back. That will help us offset what we're getting ready to talk about, about these new bids. So, like John said, we honestly could take a lot of garbage. We don't. We only take it from Hardin, I mean, from Marion and Washington and ourselves. If we didn't take those other two counties, our tipping fees would be dramatically more.
And one of the questions I asked last meeting, and you answered, we have one industry that creates more waste than all of Washington County, is that correct?
Right, it, right, about the same.
About the same, about the same.
About the same, yeah.
So, that'd be, for garbage coming in, that'd be about a 5% increase in garbage coming in.
But I get to Larry's point, too.
Sure.
I mean, the more you bring in, it's a double-edged sword, right? I mean, you're doing this thing saying, oh, Nelson County is going to last for 40 years, and then you all of a sudden say, well, come on then, Washington County, come on, in Hardin County, whoever. Well, then your compactor is going to be used twice as much, it's going to fill up quicker, and then all this planning that you all did, uh, you know, it's kind of-
But Brad's point, though, that's where, that, that is the happy medium. You know, we could, if we took you on Hardin County, we'd fill up five times faster. But we've kind of hit that happy medium, where we're getting additional revenue, but the amount that they bring in is not drastically reducing the overall lifespan of, of our landfill, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but talk about that $700,000 compactor. I mean, the more it's got to run over, the more it's getting wore out, too. That's like what Joe Larry's saying. I mean, I get it where it's at, but I get it, you also, hey, I ain't making the payment on it, so I got to do something, so I need to bring something else in, or raise my rates, or do something to-
They've got to optimize their operation. That's what they've done by minimizing the amount that you bring in from outside sources, but optimizing the revenue in order to pay for the expansion, for getting rid of the, which is $10. So, I think, they've done a good job, I think, of that, just keeping us landfill ready for the next 40 to 50 years.
Let me clarify something. I just bought the Keenan farm out there about, uh, 20 years ago now, for the, for the future, Mr. Press, you Larry Joe, uh, back when I was on the court. And, uh, all the projections, I think it was 50 years. So, right now, we're looking at, we've got enough land to go 40 more years. It takes about an acre a year on average, is about what it takes. And then, uh, we had Washington County then, and it's basically a volume thing. Without, uh, we can take Washington County on if we decide to do it, and, uh, generated about between $4,000 and $5,000 more dollars without increasing any more labor, without increasing any more equipment. Basically, it's just a cash flow thing. That helps us pay for this next thing we're getting ready to talk about, which is about $5 million. So, when you see the landfill expansion, Joe, Larry, that's, it's land we already own, we got to do it in phases, like a pond. We got to build another pond, another pond, another pond, another pond. And then, as you piece them together, then you fill in those little voids and go up, and that's kind of what, uh, so we've got about, what, another year and a half left on the existing sale. We call it a sale, and then it's going to be at capacity. So, John's been working his rear end off, and probably if you had all the papers, you got up, put them on, probably about that thick.
I've been out there seeing.
Papers, 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 papers. So, he got certified, or the, our, uh, plans got approved by the state, well, you say three months early, you anticipate it, took a couple of months. And, uh, we're talking about that here in the middle of this bid, so, uh, Washington County, I won't get into the weeds until we get on that subject. But that's, I'm just trying to address Larry Joe's question. We're not buying any land, it was already there, so. Go ahead, John, let's go ahead to-
All right, so-
Expand, the expansion, now we should-
So, for the expansion, so this, like I said, we, this is, we have permanent 40 more acres. This is a 6.7 acre sale for this. Uh, we had a couple of bidders on it, two of them, they're very good qualified bidders. Um, Hinkle was the lower of the bids. So, we have the base bid, it was 3.95. The alternate one is that liner that we use, it goes from a 60 mil, this alternate one has bumped that up to an 80 mil liner. And alternate number two is placing 12 inches of pea gravel over the entire cell, and that's used for a drainage layer and a protection layer. We do not want a 2x4 going through that liner, we don't want a T-post going through that liner and having stuff for dealing with issues for the next 30, 40, 50 years.
So, 80 mil will keep a T-post?
No, 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 the gravel, the gravel will help as a protection layer and a drainage layer.
Before it gets to, the compactor's unknown.
It's going from a 60 mil to an 80 mil is just a little extra insurance, it's just a little-
60 mil health, it's a 60.
60 mil, yes.
That's why I asked this question.
Well, I tell you, tell you, tell you, about that bit. Happy and thick?
It's not quite, no.
Seriously, it's like that. It's very thick.
You go to 80, it's probably, it's not happy and thick.
No.
It's probably not.
So-
You know what 216 set up to? You're, you're a red roof?
So, here, we bid it as a base bid. I'll make it, try to make it as simple as it gets very complicated, but the base bid meets all the requirements of Kentucky Divisional Waste Management. The minimum requirements. We've never done minimum requirements out there. When we originally designed it, we wanted a little more. We went with an 80 mil. Not a lot of landfills do that. We did it as far as protection. Everything that's out there now has an 80 mil under it.
And it's all work, too.
Well, so far, not one way. Everything out there has pea gravel on it. It does not require it, but in certain areas. We've always put it over all of it as a protection. Now, it's a big choice you guys have to make, and which reason we put in front of you. It's an $856,000 decision on that pea gravel. So, it's a big number. It's the reason we wanted you all involved in this.
That's a 10 to 1, what is that, on some of those slopes, 10 to 1s?
Some of them, it's 3 to 1.
3 to 1.
Is that one of those sections?
One of those sections. Most of it, the, the, take that one, we got one acre-ish that's 3 to 1 slope, it's steep. We worried about it.
3 to 1 is hard to walk.
Well, we were worried about staying on the, the slope.
Biggest concern, when we're doing the sides, it's going to hold, and then, of course, he showed what he did before, and we met with, what's his name?
Hinkle.
Hinkle Friday, and discuss that, just to make sure.
And while they're there, you know, that's, that's kind of the key to it. If we came back and added it later, and they got to bring equipment in and all that.
Well, and you can't leave that liner exposed. If the liner exposed and the sun gets on, it's black, it starts to break down.
And Keith, they showed us, they showed us a landfill in Boyd County that had 3 to 1 slope, that they had walked it in, and it was a year afterwards, and it was fine. They said there was no issues, no-
No issues.
They had somebody knew what they was doing, to learn to walk it in, because you can only put so much in at a time to walk it in. You can't push that whole thing at one time, walk over the back drag and say, that's it.
Yeah. They just started the ball, and they got a D6 Y track and just start pushing uphill.
So-
Just back, looking at history, I look at, Joe studied much, uh, talked to Keith guys, and I talked to another guy Friday, and on another subject, he asked me about Hinkle, and this is one totally different. But, they're over around Paris somewhere, where, uh, I saw they are, the family and organization, and it's really, and then, was the bid came in, uh, our projected bid was what, right at that?
Just a little bit over. So, came in under?
Yeah, this page, I anticipated talking to Keith guys, way everywhere else has been coming in, about 5 and 1/2, 5.6, so. I'm going to recommend them go to the, add the alternates, if I think, and probably can correct me on this, too, that as we build this thing, they'll start probably, all of September, and they may not get it done, uh, get it all laid in, based on the winter and the time we get our cash flow. Hopefully, we might, I think we can deal with that tomorrow evening, if we got time. That's where it goes. Initially, we're talking about tomorrow, maybe $3 million, but since I gave one, that's all lined out here, we're going to look at the cash flow here.
Jeff, can you bring the beach staff?
After he figured out what we're really doing, we're doing the whole time.
I'm ready. The 80 mil, John, it was 80 mil plastic, or the liner, that's what we got in our current.
Correct. Say, we're in the landfill.
That's what we got.
Correct. We have to ask permission from Divisional Waste Management that they approve that, with all crazy things.
Why would they not?
That's what I, so we have a meeting, we have a pre-construction meeting Thursday. I'm going to give them a letter today, say this is what we recommend to do, and if for some reason they say, no way, or if it's going to take another year for, to analyze it, then we would back down to 60 mil, but that's what I would recommend to do.
The nerd engineering thing, get to do a structural analysis for if an earthquake happened, stability analysis, the stability analysis was run on 60 mil.
No.
But 80 is better.
Yes, so your shear strength's better, your slip resistance is, is the same, since you're the same service area, same slip resistant, but your shear strength's greater, it's better, just whether they-
They never, they didn't give us a problem in the past using 80 mil.
They have not, but I'm just telling them, the stability analysis was done with a 60. They don't have two options. Or I ask, if they say yes, we'll do it. If they say no, we'll do the 60 and we'll meet the regulations. So, that's what I recommend.
Yeah, that's, just change that one word or sentence in there, and they throw the whole thing out. We don't want that to happen, like through the certification process. I need a motion. I'm recommending motion go to this 4.8, and then, in that motion, this is include 80, but if it's, if we can't do the 80, we go back to 60. That's what I'd like to see in the motion.
I think we need all the insurance.
100%. They, they have to provide insurance, they do a pro-pleadance payment bond?
No, I'm, I'm sure it's-
80 versus the 60, yeah, I like-
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept alternative 1 and 2. I will second that.
Judge, in, in addition to that motion, can we also add that, that with this, that it give you, you or me, the approval to sign any documents to that, to this effect, uh, just for scheduling issues, if you're not around, that would, won't hold it, hold us up to anything, so we get signatures if we need.
I'll take that. I'll make a motion that we accept the alternative 1 and 2, Hinkle, construction, and give the judge, deputy judge, the authority to sign documents to, to that effect.
I will second that as well.
A motion by Jeff's second, add any more discussion? All approved, opposed. Thank you for that. Uh-
Schedule, schedule that way with pre-construction meeting Thursday at 2 o'clock, so we'll meet with the contractor, Division Solid Waste, to go over this, and then, in that time, after that, we will give notice of war, notice of receipt, sign all the contract documents, and then, we will hopefully get everything started by August 1st. We'll start bringing equipment out August 1st.
I want to give kudos to John and Brad, they have worked their butt off on this.
It's a long, long process.
Long process.
Nice season dirt moving out there instead of just covering up dirt.
That's exactly right.
Number, we go to B, what I need here is an amendment to the standing order. I didn't talk to Rhonda about this, because she was gone, but, uh, the standing order, where we can just pay those bills without waiting for the court order, because it's a lot of cash flow for the, uh, nuclear company, and we submit the bills, and it's kind of a, I love your guys that are building houses or whatever, you got to make sure you pay your subcontractors, and we're guaranteed, and we get an email and a signature, and then, so every 30 days, you have a bunch of money, but we're going to try to get it to them, and they get us the bill in 20 days, and then we'll make sure the subcontractors are paid, guaranteed to be paid, because, uh, I personally have been burnt before, and I seen Hinkle said they have too, so. It gives us authority to prepay the bills, and at the end of the total project, uh, we're going to hold 10% on every, every bill, and at the end, that adds up to about $500,000. So, that's the very end, the last payment, when we sign off, make sure everything's paid, and they'll get their last check.
But we're not paying ahead, we're just paying as the work is done, is that correct?
It's correct.
Yes, paying as the work is done.
But I will say this, that we're buying as much of the materials, we already got the, we got the, some of the pipe-
The white order and the punk order.
Right. So, we're getting as much of that we can and saving ourselves tax.
Well, who's going to okay that, Judge, before Rhonda pays the bill? John?
Yes. So, we'll go through a review each and while, in our estimate, and make sure everything's done, make sure, if there's any QA QC testing, make sure all that stuff's done. The issue with this is, we have, like, basically a 30-day payment term, and we pay them, they're going to send us an invoice every 30 days, and after day 20, we will pay them. But before we pay them again, we need to make sure that they pay all their subs. So, we pay them in 20 days, and they have 10 days to get all their subs paid.
Because those subs can come back on us.
They can come back on us, and we want to make sure all their subs get paid. It's just a logistic, so it, it probably would work out, but we had to cancel a meeting like this one. We had to make a special meeting just to make sure the payment terms would be fine. And we'll keep you guys updated on the meeting anyway, how much we pay, how far along, what our schedule is.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to amend the standing orders to pay the landfill expansion payments.
Got a motion for John, uh?
I'll second.
Second, Keith, Rhonda's that?
It's fine. The standing orders actually already allow me to pay any contracts or bids that have been approved by fiscal court in order to stay within payment-
Right, payment schedule, yeah.
Payment schedule, so.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh, uh.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for that. We've talked about Washington County. I talked to the judge, uh, Saturday, I think, or Sunday, I remember. Uh, we went through the, uh, John, actually, he's got a, uh, we didn't send that out, did you? The, uh, it's basically the same thing as Marion County, he just changed the wording in, our contract to Marion County, use the same language, and, uh, Judge Graves is, uh, he wants to come here, just going to try to save them a little money, still haunting town, but they got a third party that does their garbage pickup, and so there's some language logistics, isn't trying, he's looking into it, and that's what I talked to him Saturday, they're trying to looking into it, so, uh, we'll just wait and see. Y'all want to talk about a demo or?
Well-
It's about between $450,000, $500,000 a year in, in, uh, revenue. Uh, going back to that, you know, we're, we're at capacity about as far as our roll-off boxes. You know, we bought 20 boxes, and we got eight of them delivered.
We had five delivered so far.
Five delivered, and our roll-off boxes, and we're trying to get over there more, with or without them, we probably might get another roll-off truck and another person just for the roll-off box side on the commercial, because we're behind, we're behind, and that's a lot of money that we're losing, maybe not losing out on, we're paying a lot overtime and so on, but just to satisfy our needs now, we probably, because, you know, we're growing like everybody else, and so we need to probably address that, which is really not anything to do with Washington County, but fixing two, uh, having two, two birds in your hand instead of one, so. But, go ahead about Washington County, have one dress anymore of it, or anybody got any questions about Washington County?
Kind of, sort of. Do we supply roll-offs to Marion County?
To Marion County?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
We do?
When you say supplies, that's on an as-needed basis, when people call-
I thought they brought their garbage, too.
Okay, so-
No, but for private business, or a private individual that needs, like, gutting a house.
Yes, like, yes. So, how Marion County brings their garbage, they have their trucks, their own, their own, county does it themselves. They have 20 yard trucks, they'll go around the county and pick up all the go-overs, they'll take it to their transfer station.
They got the 18-mueller that brings animals.
Yeah.
They'll push that into the big semi. They bring that over about three to four loads a day. We do, that's just their residential, regardless of other people. We do have-
A day.
A day, yes. They, if somebody's building a house, somebody's got factories, we got to support a few factories over there that we service.
But they rent them, so that's what we-
And we charge appropriately for the mileage and the, what it actually costs to pick it up.
Yes.
We will probably have the contract ready, uh, maybe at the next meeting. I just wanted to, as he suggested, some changes, and Chip just hadn't had enough time to review that, so we weren't in a hurry, so we just thought we'd wait, get everything, get all the language right, and make sure everybody's comfortable before we brought it before you, so.
Okay.
Now, let's move on to, road department, Mr. Spoh.
All right. Sorry, I got busy, I ended up, you got, basically, uh-
Hey, guys, stop him for a minute.
Yeah.
I want to recognize, uh, Mr. Stein just walked in, OJ Stein, and we approved him for the, uh, North Nelson Water District Board replacing Don Mudd. Don Mudd has, he's got them, because he's been there forever, so, OJ, you want to stand up? This is Mr. Stein, he lives out on Lowell Road, and, uh, he almost walked to the meetings, actually, he didn't walk up the street.
Little walk.
It probably won't hurt you, now.
No, not at all.
Anybody got any questions? Anybody want to make sure everybody can recognize these? Uh, where's your office at, actually?
Right, a couple of blocks from here, right over there. Tom, Tom Relling's building.
Yeah. What's the name of the track?
It's not orthodox. Thank you for that, Pat.
So, Jeff, is this the guy that knows a little bit about water?
Yeah. A little bit about what?
Water.
He said you were in the Navy.
Yes, sir, 24 years.
We knew a little bit more about-
Salt water only, not fresh water. Well, thank you for your service.
All right. So, let's move on, Brad.
All right. So, you always see, when we say covert replacements, getting ready for these paving and roads, Weppe's Road, Keenan Drive, Prater Lane, side of Lidle Cecil, so I'll be issuing POs for them this week, uh, for paving. Mago indicated sometime this week, they'll start beginning on some of our roads. They'll start working us in, you know, it's kind of, weather doesn't look great towards the end of the week, but we'll see how that turns out.
I think they'll start out by way.
Uh, moving right along. Uh, we installed a driveway covert at 221 Fogle Road, Keith. Uh, tree removal, we continue to just knock them out, Woodline Road, Old Hempek, Plum Run, Murray Run, Jim Clark, Harrison Ford, Tom Greer. Uh, Keith, we've been on, um, the Jim Clark area and Toon Hollow, is that one I think on?
I've seen it, yeah.
Uh, that, that had gotten almost out of hand.
The bottom of that, Brad, on this tree removal, is this, this part here is still from these storms, any of those storms, or are you just taking dead trees out as you go?
The first storm, a couple of months ago, we're done. We had this one that come in, yeah, the second storm, we're, we've gotten, it cleaned up. These more are from, just ditched trees.
These, these are the dead trees, as you go, you're taking the whole road as you go, ash trees?
Yeah. Somebody gives us a rope, and we take off.
Who gives you the rope when you bring them up?
Uh, people call in, complain, magistrates, whoever. We're calls in, and a lot of people are right on what they're saying. You see, after a rain, we get tons of phone calls.
Last night, Woodline Road was after a storm, just a week ago.
Right.
A week, I mean, a week or six, then, and then leaves came on.
Right.
And that's what put a lot of weight on them, because these dead trees, anyway, go ahead.
Well, we just continue to work on that.
I want to make sure we're on the same page, yeah. I want to make sure we're on the same page, yeah.
Held about 100 tons of sand at Dean Watts Park for them, that's for the soccer people, we did that, it's kind of a side job, helped to feed America like we always do. Fairgrounds, we've been working on trying to get that ready for the fair coming up, we always grade their parking lot up, been sending people out, the inmate crew's been going out, they'll mow and get it all ready this week, they continue to do stuff all throughout the county for us. And we start around three in District 5 mowing rightways, you know, we continue just to fight that, see how it goes. It's going pretty quick, they already have three rounds in at this time of the year.
You stood out Larry Evans?
Yes, sir. When he says that, we got a temporary guy helping us to where he frees up, it's not as costly, he was a retired gentleman. That's it for the road department.
I've got a road question.
Uh huh.
All right, so as an example, there in Botland, we do the 150, then we're building a new road, the old 150, does that get turned over to the county?
Or not?
So more than likely it is, when you ask that, we are not doing that project, Kentucky Department of Transportation will do that project.
Right.
What has always happened in the past, they don't like having two-shaped roads that parallel each other. So once they're through with the bypass, they'll turn around and do a document to us, they'll pave the road, and then they basically say, here you go, it's yours.
Got it. So they will pave it first?
Yes.
There's one issue, there were manning of 150, we keep getting a lot of calls about, me and you both, and I'm just wanting, when can we fix it instead of keep waiting on them?
Um, once they dedicate this. And I can't for sure say when that project's going to happen, talk about funding and whatnot, more than likely, they're going to ask us to take over that section of road.
You know, and you know they are, it's just part of the process.
Yes.
The, I'm going to back up for a second on garbage, since I passed that up. And I didn't make y'all copy this, but Brad, Metcalf, and Teresa, back here, have been working on, since we've been digging in a lot of stuff, I'd say in the last two, three months, but she has discovered 276 customers that were not being charged with garbage pickup at amounts to $60,000 a year in addition to road. Now how that happened, or when it happened, but it's happened over the years and I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus.
But they're not going to be expected to pay back payments, are they? They're just going to be put on the road for current?
We'll give them that later, but right now, they're going to be, yeah, they're going to be building, paying, it's $59,616 a year. Now, I don't know why it happened, but it happened, but anyway, I want to thank Teresa and Brad for digging into this and finding it and we'll just let everybody know for public record and I'll get y'all copies of this. Teresa's done an outstanding job and Brad both, not just this or several other things we've been digging into and finding, so let everybody know that. You cannot use that for any backdoor money, this is what you're thinking about. Brad, let's get into the, you and John both on water line, is that what you've got next water line bids?
We do. If you guys remember, I gave you a summary of the water line bids, you want to again?
Yeah, let's have it out, I didn't bring mine either.
All right. Basically, I had two bids, these are water lines on W.T. Thompson, Cornish, Brothers Lane, and Wickliffe. Two of those, Wickliffe and Cornish, are for City of Bloomfield and the other two are in the Barstown area. Yeah, two bids. Kiefer Contracting Land Construction. The low guy was Kiefer at $350,000, around, land construction for $400,000. I wasn't ready, the last meeting for you guys to approve this yet, I had to do some due diligence, because I've never dealt with a Kiefer contract. So I called around, did everyone receive, I sent you an email indicating the feedback that I got on this particular gentleman. Nothing against him, just ain't never dealt with him. And to be honest with you, he hasn't done a lot of water lines, he hasn't. And he's a new startup to be, you know, he's been in business for a little while, but not real long.
Probably four-inch lines.
Four-inch lines.
You know, don't take no genius putting in four-inch lines, I've done a bunch of them, I've used them, done them right, I mean, but anyway, he's a low bid and I told Brad, we talked about it, Jeff, a little bit, we'll see, I just think, Brad is doing great here, we think that's, uh.
Well, he's a new startup guy too, and everybody needs a new startup, you know.
He's done, he actually did a little bit for, I think, maybe Flynn, and he's done some work for different companies and different types of work, but he's got to start somewhere. Just back up on this Carnage Lane.
As far as we'll get it.
John and Brad both, Carnage Lane over there is, and I'm like a humph, so familiar with it, there's a discrepancy over the length of it, we all approved this a few years ago and the Lincoln Trail, and I think program, whoever did the mapping at the time, I know there's a discrepancy over the length of it, so we're trying to get that cleared up, so I'm going to recommend take Carnage Lane off of this temporarily till we get that. And we told this boy that when he did the bid opening, that there could be some addition or deletions on it, so we just take that amount of footage and correct it at the time, so we'll get into that.
So when you say take off, I'll put a different way. We're just pushing pause on that until we clarify that entire length, so that we can negotiate with the contractor on that length.
Is it bid by the foot or how's it bidding?
It is bid by the foot, but now, to be honest with you, the back part's easier than the front part.
Yeah.
And there needs to be some discussions with the City of Bloomfield.
On payments and stuff.
On funding of that additional part, because that then puts us overwhelmed with the budget. The mayor had been out all last week, he just got back yesterday, I texted with him this morning, he's supposed to be talking with his water department this morning on that, but we as a group and them have to decide on this addition. Say if you, Adam, you want by the price per foot, it's an additional $55,000 that we're thinking is going to need to take to get to the back, who's going to pay for that? So we need to have those discussions, so when, Tim says we're taking off, well, we're not taking off, we're just pushing pause for now, until we figure it out.
Till clarified.
Gentlemen, we've got plenty of time on that particular one, we've kind of told them where we want to start again on this project, but Kim, is that a fair thing to say?
It's fair, but we're taking it off today.
I'm seeing out of the side of my eye, somebody's shaking, hey, I'm trying to be politically correct here.
I can't, we're not taking it off, Brad. I can't prove, except to be without that's what I'm saying, today, and then we'll move forward on that.
Was this Lincoln Trail guy here, is he the same guy?
No.
Yes. You say he's the same guy, that gentleman that sit right over there.
He's the one that officially helped me, that I did some investigation, I sent you all the email on that. They said, yes, back in the day, it was 1.1 miles.
For whatever reason, when they redid the mapping, it got shortened up, it was a mistake, it probably was, who knows?
Yeah, we're going to get it cleared up.
It's easy to clear up, it just takes a fiscal court decision to do that, but you also have to make sure, when you extend it back out, why are you extending it out? We got all kinds of little private roads out there where everybody would love to, or should take them in, so you better make sure of the reasoning why you're doing it, and if it was a mistake, so be it, let's own it, it was a mistake. You didn't do it.
So like, how many years do you think it's been? Don't know.
Man, it looks like in 2002-ish is when it got kind of gray.
20 years ago.
And then you remember last July, we adopted the new set of roads again, the length. It may been an error on that particular one, but it should be back another 14, 15. It's got to figure it out.
We'll figure it out. I'm going to entertain a motion on Wickliffe and Brothers Lane and W.T. Thompson roads today, so get started now. Also, in this discussion, Mr. Kiefer said he could get, Brothers Lane is one of the most pushing because there are a couple new houses going in there and they need the water quicker, and Jessica knows that at the city, we've talked about it also, and he'll get that one started as soon as he gets the pipe ordered and going, and then the other two, we'll probably push them out a little bit toward the fall and, so I need a motion except these three roads today.
Well, what is the timeline on this, Judge? This year?
The second two, if I'll be up in the fall, he may not get them done till winter, but you know, you lay pipe in the winter, most contractors like to.
This morning, they thought it would take 30 days to do W.T. Thompson at most, and thought it would take a week to do Wickliffe, and he said, Brothers, he's thinking it'll take 30 days-ish as well, and Cornish, you know, same thing. So once we get it approved, you know, so Keith, yes, it would be this fall-ish.
Unless something rains every day?
Well, then we start documenting rain days, is what we do. And I just keep them running.
I think it'd be, personally, it'd be up in the winter when he gets finished. If I, me, I don't see no problem with that.
No, I don't either.
I would make a motion if everybody agreed with that. I'll make a motion to approve the three Wickliffe, Brothers Lane, and W.T. Thompson.
I'll second.
A motion, and then Keith, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for that. Brad, thank you, Brad's put a lot of work in this, a lot of work in it, actually, and uh. All right. Brad, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Pertaining to water, I don't want to say anything else. Jeanette?
I just wanted to thank Brad for allowing me and Kathy to be with the district, I know I would have to be on it.
Which Brad you talking about?
Well, Brad.
Brad two or one?
Brad two and you also. I've got a great fiscal court that I'm working for, I care and I cares about this redistricting of becoming clerk, so thank you. We did have our appeals meeting at the end of June, we had 26 appeal letters, they went pretty good so far, haven't heard anything, but I do need fiscal court to be thinking about adding a, appointing another person for next year, the appeals committee. Again, Judge, the inmate crew come down to our building, looks nice, thank you, and doesn't have.
For us newbies, what's the appeals committee?
The appeals committee, property tax.
Oh, for property tax.
Yeah, who'd I put on this time?
What was his name? Ken, Ken, yes, and then we have B and B for fiscal court, B and B Harris.
Is she coming out next year?
Yes, so fiscal court will need to decide, and I think the mayor, he's still got two more years before he.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to talk about, I'll back up, since it's a special meeting, Mr. County Attorney, let me get back to my man here, make sure I mess up nothing. Well, it's under the jailers report and the road department, so I'm going to talk about cleanup, jail inmates, and what our crews have done and continue to do, and I hear raves about it everywhere, and so I sent a crew to Fairfield, they had their home coming over there, man, I tell you, everybody's talking about it.
They're great, yeah.
And just pressure washing and all this stuff, and then they've been, they've just been doing, going everywhere, done a lot of work. I think we're probably saved to date, probably up to $125,000, maybe $130,000 if you figure the hours and time and all that, but, but we're hearing a lot of, just a lot of great things, after, after, I talked about that last meeting, got the new courthouse, all the landscaping they did, and we've got several more big projects for them to do that we're not going to contract out that they have in the past, it saves us a lot more money, this courthouse in particular. The inmates on that front wall, we've been doing some more work, and then the landscaping, there's going to be a lot more things that they're going to do, so that's probably where I need to stop, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion on that, no.
Jeanette, were you there?
Yes, thank you.
Sheriff's report, Raymond is in some training, I think, at, Brandon?
I'm going to have a report, it's those vehicles that he told you about.
Yeah, I called Raymond Friday or whatever that was, and they had two wrecked vehicles, one of them, both of them got totaled, one of them was a deer, another one was another, I don't remember exactly what it was, but anyway, they totaled them both out. We end up getting from the insurance, 30, around $30,000 to replace one, spread at $60,000 plus, about $63,000, and not two. I said, what's that other guy driving? He said, Keith, you like this one, tell him to send me a picture. He said, my new guy's driving a pickup truck. He said, I'm running out of cars. I said, I want to take a picture of that pickup truck and I'm going to post it.
From District one?
So, saving money, so, but I need a motion to, they've got one ready to go at, where's it at?
Botman.
Botman.
What wrecked?
We had two different explorers get wrecked, we have one.
Can you replace them with a Tahoe?
Well, two vehicles for one, but we're, for my understanding, the sheriff has worked out.
Two of them got wrecked and of course you can't get them again if you order them, you know, it's like the same thing, I talked to Dick Keating about it, it's just an ongoing, he was talking about this the other day, he's trying to get some vehicles and.
They're not there?
Just not, it's hard for me to understand, really, that you still can't get the vehicles and stuff because of different parts, and, but they do have one down there ready to go, and get, you know, get two wrecked vehicles. Now, I am checking with the insurance, matter of fact, Karen was talking about it, Brad is trying to come up with a replacement policy versus, they get wrecked, and I don't know what the cost would be, a total replacement, because it puts you in a bind, you know, if you get, you know, if you've got a 10-year-old truck or 5-year-old, whatever, you can replace that, you're just going to be upside down.
And then all those accessories you have to buy, it's up to about 20 grand now, I think, per vehicle.
You know, the replacement, you know, you get house insurance or whatever, you get full replacement, I don't know if you can on a vehicle type thing, we're checking in that with CAECO.
I don't think you can either.
You don't think you can?
No, vehicles depreciate, I mean, you know, you've got something with so many miles of the life, a vehicle's not like a home, it's got a set lifespan, and it's worth less every day.
Well, we're going to negotiate, we'll try.
Good luck.
Because it puts you in a bind when this happens, I mean, things happen like a deer running across the road or whatever, I mean, that.
There are, there are policies where you can get like an 18-month, if a vehicle's 18 or 24 months or less, you can do replacement, but after that, I don't know of anything.
Yeah, so maybe we need to, then anyway.
I'll make the motion to purchase the one vehicle from Botman Chevrolet to replace the two.
And I will second that.
Motion by John, second by Adam, all in favor? Any more discussion first? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you all.
County Attorney, Mr. Deaton, did you get a copy of that, sir? The second reading, you want to talk about this briefly, or anything you want to talk about, actually, second reading on our zoning text amendments for the bourbon warehouses, we already passed first reading on it. I just need the motions to accept the second reading.
There's been no changes, Greg.
No changes, you can't let anyone discuss on it?
I at least need to do a summary of it, and I'll do that now.
Okay.
So the changes we have here are to amend Section 8.2A, that language now going to read mandatory, it is previously read not required, highly recommended as far as a pre-application process. So again, none of those changed from last time, but that's, that's the change there. Eight, to 8.2C, there was a build out of an approved planned unit, was originally to be within three years, that's now being changed to 10. To 6.1A, to delete distilled spirit storage building as permitted, principal use in A1 zoning district. Fourth change, amend Section 6.1C to delete distilled spirit storage on tracks between 50 and 100 acres as a permitted potential use in A1 zoning district. And then the fifth change here we have is to create six, or to create Section 6.1D, Section 4, to allow distilled spirit storage facilities as permitted, as a permitted planned unit development in A1 zoning district, per 83A.060. The reading of the ordinance may be satisfied by stating the title and reading the summary rather than the full text, that is a summary of those changes, and again, they've not been changed since the first reading.
The motion to accept, second reading as presented by Mr. Deaton.
I'm going to motion approve.
Motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second.
Second by John, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for that. This gets us back in good standing, I hope, with the community and everybody knowing that, but at least the public now will have a voice in where warehouses are gonna be built. It's go through the process, and have a lot more discussion and transparency, and so everybody know what's going on. So, thank you, everybody, for that. It's been a lot of time and effort put into that, so hopefully we can focus on some new things. Thank you, Mr. Deaton.
We just kept 14, you know, like that, man.
Uh, no, you don't wanna go to the magistrate's report. John?
Uh, yes, sir. So the, we have completed the transition to the .gov website, thanks to our person who does our website, she did a lot of work on it, got it up and going. She also redirected the traffic from the old site to the .gov, so now if you search Nelson County, Kentucky on your web browser, it comes up with a .gov address. We'll be working, Jeff and I were discussing this morning, on looking at going to .gov email addresses for the county officials and employees in the future about what that looks like, and Dino and I are working, still working on getting a draft report together over the, with the overdose deaths and on the opioid and stuff that we've been talking about, as is late.
Thank you. Jeff?
No report?
M.T. Making all... Jeff?
I'd just say, I'd like to thank the road department for sponsoring some of these down trees. One of those in particular was on a Sunday morning, people trying to get to church, and the county was Johnny on the spot, and got right out there and got the road opened up. Good deal.
Keith? I just wanna thank Mr. Joe Prue for his dedication to the county, and his friendship, and everything else that he's done for Nelson County.
End of my report.
But he won't come back up.
Is he still here, or he leave?
He left.
He sneaking out on me, fading into the back. The, on my report, I've just got the, basically about the parks, Watts Park and any other parks that got into county, the, there's some planning and zoning stuff there, that's part of the record, too, they may want to study them, getting off track, that we're gonna have to prove. So the, what my goal here is, and I haven't really got to talk to the magistrate so much about this, we had some change in leadership at Watts Park here a few months ago, a new director on a contract basis, Tyler Webster, he's been helping us, and we want to decide on how we're gonna move forward out there. I've talked to, you know, lots and lots of people, years, about, everything, ever since I've been here, everything I've talked about is, I wanna make sure we got a 30 to 40-year plan, when somebody comes in, takes our place, they can just take it off and running. It's about a 30-year, since we built that park, I think when Dean and I took office in '94, we ran that, so we're coming, approaching the 30-year mark, basically, out there now, when we started that park, and we got one of the nicest parks in the community, as far, or the state, I guess you'd say, and I've done a lot of traveling, coached a lot over the years, you see all these people, so we're, you know, we're way up here, and then, then there's a lot more that's above us as far as expanding and all that. So what I wanna do is create a long-range planning committee, and so technically, I'll make it official Nelson County Parks and Recreation Department, and then it'll be composed of nine members, and we're gonna have six citizen appointments, and then we'll have two magistrates. Who's the two magistrates on here now? We did that back in January.
Yeah, Pete and Keith, I think.
Yeah. So I wanna recommend, when y'all got this, I'm gonna go through it. John Greemel, he'll sit on there for three years. Andy Bishop, Michael Andy Bishop, people know him, he's very active at the park, and he's got, he's a banker, and he's really, as far as financial numbers and all that, he would help us tremendously. Tracy Bickett, she's very involved in athletics, and she was really excited about asking her about some long-range vision, about what we can do out there. Robert Cecil, Robert still here?
Yeah.
Robert, he's, he works at the bank, he's been on several boards and committees, and he's got a lot of experience in management. I want him, make sure he's, he's agreed to do this, this is, I'll back up there.
Him and Andy are four years?
Andy Bishop's four years, and then Tracy will be three years, trying to stay with these things as they come through, and then Robert will be four years. Roger Robinson, he's coached at a lot around the community for years and years, he's a head coach at Bethlem High School, and he's really, really involved in the baseball side of it, and softball, really, because he coached football and everything back in the day, too. So he's, he's got a lot of experience, I'm gonna get him on here to help us, get us. Justin Grundy, he's, he works at Barstown High School, and he helps manage a lot of their leagues, and teams, and football, and basically all the little league stuff, so he'll be on there for two years. And we've got Tyler, which is technically our director in contract right now, Tyler Webster, which is missing, man. And then the two magistrates, who's the two magistrates?
Keith and Andy.
What about this Justin Grundy?
I just said Justin Grundy. Keith, you're on the committee, and M.T.
Yeah. If you'll notice, these appointments are delayed by two months. The reason is, is by statute, when a judge reorganizes anything at all, it takes 60 days to go into effect, so this just follows that, after that reorganization goes into effect, then these appointments will take effect.
Well, the thing is, we had the joint, and I was a big part of that years ago, the Joint City County Recreation Board, and then when he split that up, what, six, seven years ago, because you was on the board when I left, I think, and then, so it really hasn't been an active board, it's just been, you know, through the judge, and they've added the directors. So, I just wanna get more people involved. Now, Mr. County Attorney, do I need to make a motion? Do we have a motion to accept this as I presented?
You can make that motion.
Well, do we, we need a motion for the committee before we do the motion for the appointments?
So, you need to approve a committee, and then you need to approve the appointment of each committee member.
Separately.
Correct.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the committee as presented, the restructuring. You wanna read it, M.T., if you wanna do it, the top paragraph?
I make a motion to approve the Nelson County Parks Recreation Department proposal to reorganize.
Read that next paragraph, you have one to...
That's pursuant in to KRS 67.715, and County Administrative Code, Section 100.4, that's you. Judge Hudson's to propose to reorganize the Parks and Recreation Department to include long-range planning committee to support the planning and strategic vision for the continued success of Nelson County's parks.
That's in a motion for, and a second.
Second.
Motion, M.T., second by John, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, these appointments, I need to do them individually? Your suggestion for me to do that? You mind doing them, whoever wants to do them? One at a time?
I'll start.
I'll make the motion, then we accept Justin T. Grundy, the appointment of Justin T. Grundy to the Parks and Recreation Long-Term Advisor Committee.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd make a motion for Robert Cecil for a four-year term to the Nelson County Parks and Recreation Long Range Advisory Committee.
Motion by Adam.
Second.
Second by M.T. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion when we appoint Roger Robinson to a two-year term to the board.
Motion by Jeff.
I'll second.
Second by Keith, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tracy Bickett, three-year term, in September.
Motion by M.T., second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to accept John C. Greemel to the Parks Department for a three-year term.
Motion by Keith.
Second.
Second by M.T., all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.